Deborah, you're muted.
I may mute back and forth. I have two rather active sporting dogs. So if you see me mute, that would be why. They're not happy, but they also may come in the screen, as I believe may be just happening right now.
Welcome, John. So Tom, I guess, is the only one we're missing. Let's give him another minute or two. John, is the school year done?
It looks like his dog fed out.
Yeah, he's via phone. I think he said at our last meeting that his last day is the 21st of June.
It's Monday.
Am I in the meeting?
You haven't, Janelle, you haven't heard from Tom?
You're in, John.
Yes, you're in, John, yeah.
Yeah, John's in. I sent Tom an email with the link about a half hour ago.
I just went through the city webpage. Is that?
That's fine.
Obviously, I'm here, so it worked, right?
Yes.
Okay, because I kept on looking for a specific email and there wasn't one, so.
Yep, for next month, I'm gonna, I'm gonna clean up all the invitees and make sure everybody's on the list. But again, if you lose that one, you just come in through the nor, the one on the agenda and I can, I can add you to, bring you in.
I made a special folder for meeting invites and then what I'm looking for is usually on top.
All right, I'm gonna get started. Is Jackie with us?
Yes, she is.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna get started and call the regular monthly meeting of Lewis Planning Commission to order at 6:32 by my, 33 by my watch on Wednesday, June 16th. The first order of business was to welcome our two new commissioners, their first opportunity to join us. They were confirmed, as you know, just a couple of days before our last meeting and were not otherwise available to join us then, but Deborah and Tom Jensen, wherever you are, welcome. We're thrilled to have you with us. We look forward to working with you and all of your fellow commissioners are certainly good mentors and aides. If you ever need any of them, they're really the smart people that you should be talking to.
Thank you. I've already spent time with Janelle and spoken to you, so, and I know many people in this group and will be quick to ask. Thanks.
Welcome again. First order of business is an overview of the process presentation and scheduling of a public hearing regarding the remand of the Fisher's Cove major subdivision application for the creation of 18 single-family lots in sight of improvements off Rodney Avenue, Zone R2 Sussex County Tax Map 335-4.00-15.00. This is somewhat of a unique situation and therefore we're going to follow the following script for the moment. First, I'm going to have Glenn talk to us about the procedures we're going to follow based on the code and otherwise to consider this remand. Next, Janelle's gonna update us, even though she's provided very extensive written documentation on the website. She's gonna update us in an overview of the technology of this, since it's not been before us for 15 months. Willard, I believe, is going to kick off the representation of the applicant. He's going to have 20 minutes tonight to talk to us to give us an introduction into the application changes that have been made. This is not a forum for Q and A. We will then schedule a public hearing. You all know the date, which is July 13th. We'll talk about the timing in just a minute. But that will be the substance of the discussion tonight. Prior to taking up those matters, because this is all related to Fisher's Cove, Deborah, I believe you have remarks you wish to make?
I would. I wanted to say again, thank you for the appointment, Chairman McKay and the City of Lewis. I really look forward to serving the citizens of Lewis on the Lewis Planning Commission. Regretfully, I must recuse myself from my very first application, which is Fisher's Cove. The applicant's attorney has requested that I recuse myself. I am recusing because I do not want to put the LPC or the City of Lewis in a litigious position or possibly cause any decision on Fisher's Cove to be questioned or overturned. Therefore, I'm going to be recusing myself from further discussions of Fisher's Cove.
And for purpose of the Zoom, that means she's going to mute herself and block her audio or video picture. Glenn, is that sufficient?
That's perfect, Mr. Chair. Yep.
Yeah, I have something to say too.
We'll look forward to you coming back.
Thank you.
Bob, you have a comment you wish to make, please?
Yeah, I do. And I wrote it out, so stay with me a second. But earlier today, the city attorney reminded me that back in 2019, I'd signed up petition about Fisher's Cove. That date was July 7th, 2019. The point of that reminder was really to question whether I could recuse myself from the discussion of Fisher's Cove or should recuse myself. That petition was months ago and more than 15 months before I was appointed to the planning commission. I really have not thought about Fisher's Cove until I saw it again on the agenda and opened my computer on Saturday night. The question is whether I can be objective and unbiased. Since moving to Lewis, I have combined on a number of subjects, writing to the mayor, city council, Cape Gazette about many issues, frag mighties, traffic on King's Highway, sand dunes, naming of Martin Luther King Way. My wife and I have held meet and greet events for political candidates. When asked, I have filled out surveys about the police department and other organizations. I have attended numerous public hearings and public meetings. My biggest effort has been on voter registration to make it easier and more inclusive. These efforts are the interest of a concerned citizen, nothing more. At my core, I am a practicing mechanical engineer and scientist who makes decisions on, based on verified science and facts. I do this every day in my business. I can be objective regarding the development of Fisher's Cove and I find no reason to recuse.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate you making that record. All right. Glenn, do you want to walk us through the framework under which we will proceed, please?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this application, you recall, the planning commission recommended denial of preliminary consent on November 14, 2019, and that was under City Code Section 170-19F. Then on April 13, 2020, city council remanded the application back to the planning commission for further consideration. They did that with some guidance and some certain, some specific things that city council asked the planning commission to, to look at and the applicant to provide further information concerning those items. Although the city code at Section 170-19F1 does permit city council to return the application to the planning commission, the city code doesn't specifically provide procedure or what process the planning commission is to follow upon a remand. So for the sake of clarity, I want to describe where the planning commission is in the review process. The application has not received preliminary consent, so we're really operating under Section 170-19 of the code, which is titled preliminary consent. Because the council remanded the application for additional consideration of certain items, the planning commission will need to schedule another public hearing under 170-19E to get public comment. My expectation is that the testimony presented at that public hearing will be focused on the items raised by city council when it's remand action. But to be clear, the public hearing will not be exclusively limited to those items. It'll be a public hearing on the application. Once the public hearing has been held, the planning commission will endeavor to make a decision to grant or deny preliminary consent within 90 days, as provided in 170-19F. But again, because the code doesn't provide a specific process on a remand, it's not entirely clear whether the 90-day window applies to the process that we're under. But my understanding and talking with the chair is that he will try to observe that 90-day window and get in, get a decision from the planning commission on preliminary consent within those 90 days.
That's correct.
And that's what I have, Mr. Chair, unless there's any questions for me.
Any questions on that procedure that we're going to be following? Hearing on, Janelle, would you please? Welcome, Tom.
He might be via phone, so it might just take him an extra minute.
Okay. Well, in the meantime, Janelle, you can either put up some of the material or you can just, please, give us a brief overview of the chronology and what's been submitted and where people, for the people who are not on the commission, where they can find the background material.
Absolutely. So the application was originally submitted in 2018. It started going through the, the process through the Parks and Rec, through the planning commission. Planning commission even did a site visit back in 2019. Updated plans were submitted in 2019. The commission held a public hearing, June 13th, that continued to July and August. So there was lengthy public process for the application. And then in November of 2019, the planning commission rejected the preliminary consent. The applicant then went to mayor and council. Mayor and council allowed for some written comments. And then at their April 13, 2020 meeting, they remanded the, they returned the application back to the planning commission with five conditions. In May of this year, the applicant has submitted the plans based on the item, the conditions set out by the planning, by the mayor and council that, in the five items, were stormwater management, new flood model from AECOM, who had done the city's flood model report, review by the Sussex Conservation District, discussion of looking at Rodney Avenue improvements and addressing topography and the use of fill and the removal of soil on the property. So the applicant did provide a letter regarding the, the response to the conditions from mayor and council. They've also provided approval from the Sussex Conservation District, so those stamped plans are actually on the city's website. So Fisher's Cove, as do all applications, major applications like this, have their own webpage under development review. So you can go there and find Fisher's Cove and under that section, there's a section that's called preliminary consent and remand and all those items can be found there. You can find the office state fire marshal approval. You can find the, the updated plans showing the revisions based on the, the conditions council provided. You can find additional, the stamped stormwater management plans. And all the way at the bottom, because that's where the public comments are, all the way at the bottom, there's a section for public comments. We have received a couple of public comments. They are there. Those will be addressed as part of the public hearing and they will continue to be added to and the public also has the ability to submit through a link that is there regarding the remand, the items in the application. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I would just take one wordsmithing. The mayor and city council gave us back five areas to develop further information about it to address specifically in our return. I wouldn't call them conditions per se, but it's really left up to us to develop those five issues sufficiently to give enough information to go back and answer the concerns raised by the mayor and city council and indeed by some of you when we first considered this. All right, I'm sorry to interrupt, Janelle. Any questions for Janelle? Everyone have any problems finding what's there? Certainly, it's easy to do from the website with a little help from Janelle. Joe?
Janelle, have we gotten any comments lately or they all from like a year or two ago?
No, we, at the, we've gotten some within the last couple of days and they're all the way at the bottom and they do say public comment regarding the remand. So there's an actual section for that now.
Okay, I'll look at that. Thank you.
One of them came in today.
And we've had some comments from representatives of various groups about the procedure we're gonna follow, which has been addressed by Glenn and me to explain what we were going to be doing based on our consultation earlier this month. All right, any other questions for Janelle? If not, I'm going to turn to Mr. Willard. Janelle will bring him up and then we'll see his PowerPoint presentation, which is also on the website and available for your downloading or reviewing in detail. Tim, you with us? I think we just lost him. Oh, there he is.
Can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
Now I can, Tim.
Okay, since COVID, it's nice to see you all. Can you see me?
Yes.
Yes.
Your colleagues, we see four of you.
Right, right. This is some equipment we've purchased since our firm has had to do some COVID. So you just tell me how close you want me to get to me. Janelle probably wants, Janelle probably wants me to stop there. But in, in my conference room here, Mr. Chair, first of all, let me introduce myself to some of the new members. My name is Tim Willard. With the firm Fluke Willard Stevens in shop. We have an office here in Georgetown where I am right now and in Lewis and Rehoboth as well. And some of you probably are glad you haven't seen me in a while. But here I am with my clients here, Justin Healy, he's with the applicant, Burke and Reteki. Also seated to my left over here are the engineers, Jeff Bros and Steve Gorski. And also Sean Tucker is here as well at the end of the table. And I'm gonna try to certainly adhere to your 20 minutes. It's my understanding that's been said a few times by you, Mr. Chair, and Glenn, that I'll just be a brief overview and that's what I intend to do. Just give you a brief overview, tell you maybe what has changed specifically about what you all saw. Some of the new people haven't seen it at all, some minor changes. And then Mr. Bros or Steve Gorski will talk about, just briefly, to summarize how we look just the concerns that council asked for. As far as the procedure itself, I did talk to Mr. Mandatus about it. I understand this is somewhat unique. We, we believe this is not a do-over, not unlike when a court remands something with specific questions. I agree with you, Mr. Chair, that they're asking for, I think, what your code says, further consideration. And then they emphasize the five issues specifically that they want to address and we intend to address them specifically. So you know this is a remand and what the council request specifically was clarification on the stormwater man, stormwater management system, in particular considering the water table. Number two, they wanted some input from AECOM and the, and the applicant to work with them. They wanted soil conservation district review. In fact, we, we have approval, which is very unusual at this stage. There's a lot of work done on that and we have approval. They wanted Rodney options, Rodney Street Avenue options. And I know on the agenda report that it said we gave options. We actually give a recommendation that I think was vetted with the engineers, no agreement, obviously, that the 24 feet would be a reasonable compromise. And with that, they've, they've offered actually specific diagrams and drawings of cross-sections, et cetera. And finally, number five is topography and what there would be in fill. And not unlike soil conservation district would say you've gotten approval for the fill numbers show that there will be a net zero. So briefly, I'm gonna talk about the, the summary of changes. I'll go through them pretty quickly. You might want to take notes. But if you're looking at what you looked at a year ago, you might want to say, okay, what's different here? One thing is different is lots nine through 18 have been reduced in their width from 87 feet to between 75 and 76. The dimensions are all still legal dimensions and as well as the volume of those lots. Jack's Way has been shortened due to the fact that those widths have changed, which is actually a good thing. It's made room for a stormwater facility to the left and you're looking at the plan right now. I think Steve has access for the mouse, so you may see that wiggle around what I'm talking about. Rodney and Patchy, the intersection, as you come into the neighborhood, that intersection was revised to a more conventional intersection with a wider radii and further away from the last lot on Rodney Street, so it's a smoother approach. They added an upsized, an underground storm drain and with, for, and inlets. They added drainage easements on lots three and five and seven for swales in the rear of them. You can see where they are. Tyler Circle was widened to 24 feet from 22. That's a statutory code requirement. We need your recommendation on that. That particular plan that commission you have before you still has it at 22, but it's gonna be revised to 24 and it can be done without upsetting some of the figures. They're also removed unnecessary sidewalks within the stormwater pond circle in the middle, which actually supports the AECOM and other, you know, recommendations to decrease impervious property. And there's a waiver request for that as well. They worked, Duffy had worked with AECOM. They exchanged numbers to enhance the conveyance of runoff from site under certain surge models. And I should mention, some of you are aware of Fisher's House. Do you recall, you know, doing, removing that and getting the minor subdivision and all that? But if any of you have gone down there, I think you'd be impressed with the progress of the restoration of that house. So it started shortly after that approval and, and that house is being restored in a, in a fine way. As I mentioned, there's a waiver for the sidewalks interior and the length of Jack's Way at the top technically is a cul-de-sac, which is, should be 200 feet and it's 225. But as you can see from that, that there are no houses on the left side. It's just stormwater. So the reason for that length is usually because of volume and that shouldn't be a problem, but that's the second waiver we have. And I should point out that the record, you know, I know this because it's several boxes in my office, is the entire record, but most, most recently. But it, it does include, in fact, the BPW certified utilities. It includes the parks committees recommendation. So certain things are already in the record. Most recently, Janelle has indicated what's come in, obviously the mail letter from Duffy. I have a cover letter in there, which I commend you all to review. That's Steve Gorski's summary of the response to the conditions. With that are the plans, preliminary plans, which include multiple stormwater plans, which is, we believe, is quite frankly ahead of the game and we have approval on that. We, after Steve wrote his letter responding to everything, there was some response from Janelle, you know, just about some other things. A large part of them not due as she indicated till final. But, but some of those, there was another response from Duffy responding to her was what was needed as far as assessments and easements and just some cleanup items, but you can see that in the subsequent correspondence. And you also have Janelle's agenda report as well as GMB reports, which just came in last Friday. So with that said, I'd like to turn this over to Mr. Bros, I think, and Steve Gorski. And I'm gonna back this up if I can do it and they're just gonna go through this PowerPoint.
Thank you, Tim. Good evening. My name is Jeff Bros. I'm a registered professional engineer with Duffyl Associates and I'm the project principal. With me this evening is Steve Gorski, also a registered Delaware professional engineer who's the project manager. In the interest of time, I'll try to be quick. As Mr. Willard noted, basically there were five remand issues. One was stormwater management and I'm gonna let Steve very briefly, Janelle, if we could go back to the, the rendered site plan, I think it might be most helpful. Let Steve Gorski quickly walk you through the key features of the stormwater management plan.
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, we have, as Tim had already noted and Janelle, we've got full Sussex Conservation District approval on the storm management system. The facilities include two wet ponds, which are shown in blue. They retain, they're called extended detention storm management systems, which retain water for 48 hours, storm flooding runoff and slowly release it over time into the downstream well and areas. There's also a dry finger in the loop, inside the loop right there that provides additional flood storage for storm, storms above the one here storm that will remain dry. It's above the water table in that area. The wet ponds reflect water table levels. We did additional two technical borings to confirm where the water table is located. We also added swales, wide swales behind lots three, four and five and seven with additional storm drains, inlets and bigger storm drain pipes that help convey the runoff from the backyards of Rodney Avenue and the adjacent properties to the northeast towards Palatine Route.
Well, thanks, Steve. And as I say, we've tried to be responsive to the concerns we had heard earlier from both the residents and the issues that came up from the city staff as well. I would also note that we've worked very closely, Janelle, you could go up to the, the second remand item. We worked very closely with AECOM as was requested. We gave them our CAD files. They imported that information into their flood study model. It gave us some recommendations and iteratively, we worked with them to improve our design to minimize any flooding impact throughout the number of surge options. So that was very helpful and certainly appreciate the help, you know, provided by AECOM. On the third remand comment was asking for Sussex Conservation District to review our plans. As you've noted, both Mr. Willard and Mr. Gorski have said, we actually have approved plans for this project from the Sussex Conservation District. And you can see in the file in the next two slides, show you the approval letter from Sussex Conservation District as well as the approved set of drawings, which is the next slide, Janelle, by Conservation District. The next remand comment was provide some detail on what consideration should be given to improving Rodney Avenue to provide safe ingress and egress, not only for the residents on Rodney, but also for the residents who would eventually live in Fisher's Cove. We worked with both the city engineering planner and came up with a recommendation, which we're gonna show here. You can see the picture looking up Rodney Avenue or down Rodney Avenue in a plan view in the black and white version. Rodney Avenue is currently approximately 18 feet wide. It certainly doesn't meet city code. We developed the recommendation that we think provides the needed safe access. Fire marshal has, has accepted it. And our recommendation is to go to a 24-foot, what we call open section. Maybe the next slide, Janelle, has a cross-section, if I recall. So our goal here was again, as I say, to provide not only safe access for emergency vehicles and residents, but also to minimize the impact to the residents living on Rodney. So we're recommending a 24-foot width, which is obviously the minimum the city would, would allow under its code. So it would be a widening on both sides and then providing drainage improvements, which also would help storm drainage along Rodney Avenue by way of swales and some pipe conveyance. The, the final remand question was concerning fill, principally fill and changes in topography. And I guess we could put the next slide up, Janelle. This is obviously the grading plan for the site. I won't go through it in detail, but suffice it to say that there's obviously cuts and fills occurring on this site. But our goal was to achieve no net fill in the regulated flood plain. And we, we believe we've done that on the project and obviously we have Conservation District approval. So with that, I'm gonna stop. I think we've left you a few minutes in our 20 and appreciate your time.
Let me just say, thank you all for that. Let me just say that you will be given an opportunity to make further comments at the beginning. to make further comments at the beginning of the public hearing, but you should be prepared for questions from the commission at that time. And I'm sure the public may have some that will either come in beforehand or that might be submitted during the public hearing. So you will have more opportunity to address in detail the changes you've made and how you've addressed the five areas that Mayor and City Council specifically raised. In the meantime, I've suggested to the commissioners that if they have questions or data that they need, they should convey it to Janelle. Who will also convey to you any requests for information or backup that you have that might support the changes you've made, or at least explain the changes you've made in other in greater detail. So we may have an ongoing dialogue for the next couple of weeks before we get to the public hearing. And I appreciate your cooperation and support and your clients' willingness to participate in this detailed examination of your plans. We're not going to take questions and answers on the substance tonight. Are there any procedural questions for them at the moment?
Okay, the next. I'm sorry, Mr. I don't know if that I don't know if that was directed at me. Are you going to set a date for a public hearing tonight?
In just one second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's all right, Jim. Unless there's further procedural questions for Glenn or myself, the public hearing will be on the night of Tuesday, July thirteen. Only question to the commission is should we start at six or six thirty? I don't know what the public response is going to be. It's been quite active in the past, as you all know or may know. We have fifty participants on the call tonight. I don't know what the number of persons wanting to testify. Do we want to go back to the six o'clock hour? So we have another half hour? Or do we want to stay at six thirty? Whatever the whatever the pleasure of the commission.
I would certainly recommend that we start at six. That gives us plenty of time to hear from the public and ask our own questions, I think.
Is there any objection starting at six on the thirteen?
None.
Very none. We will we will schedule the public hearing to begin at six o'clock on July thirteen.
We know where.
Will be by Zoom. The city does not have adequate space to house those that we think may be interested in participating. The only way to do that is via Zoom. So the public hearing will be via Zoom. I think we've managed pretty well in the past with Janelle and Anne Marie's assistance to recognize people that have questions, hands up or otherwise submitting chat. And I'm confident we can hold a viable public hearing via Zoom on the thirteen. All right. Unless there's anything procedural about this, I want to thank again Mr. Willard and his colleagues and his client for their attention to these matters, for all the material that's been submitted. There's quite a bit to review. Quite a bit of detail to look at, and we will we will engage in that beginning on the thirteen. I expect that we will not have much time. Oops, I made one mistake. We will keep the public record open until close of business July thirtieth. So if there's comments after the public hearing, the public will have until close of business Friday, July thirtieth to submit them. Which means that we will take the matter up again on our agenda in August at our regular meeting. And I do want to reiterate, Mr. Willard, that we will do our best to do this in less than ninety days, but I my intention is no longer than ninety days. We will move with as much alacrity and dispatch as we can, but we will consider the matter fully fairly and try and get it done as quickly as we can with those parameters.
Thank you.
All right. So we are now set to move to new business unless there's another. I don't see a hand, but unless I see any other questions. New business is nominations for the joint site development ad hoc review committee. This one is to do the brewery on Savannah Avenue. And we had three drinkers apply. No, to be serious for the moment, we had three people who decided they would be willing to volunteer to do this. It is the chair's intention, with your permission, to rotate members of the joint site development ad hoc review committees that are formed from time to time. We just finished one on the school. We now have this one on the brewery. And unless there's an objection, the chair would like to appoint Nancy Stacy, Bob Heffernan and Tom Jensen to those to that to serve on that review committee with the mayor and members of H Park. Is there objection to those appointees?
No.
Hearing none. Nancy, Bob and Tom, go forth and enjoy. I appreciate your willing to volunteer. And we will move along. Going next then to reports. And we have four categories of possible reports. First one is annexation zone subcommittee.
I don't believe we've got anything to report.
All right, no problem. Melanie, I think floodplain is still yours.
Yes, we we finished up with the outstanding issues on the floodplain regulations and they have been sent back to the reviewers who have provided input. So as soon as we get that back, we hope to move forward.
So maybe by July or maybe August, we'll have it on our agenda.
Yes, that's my hope.
Great. All right, subdivision ordinance subcommittee one seventy. Who's John? We can't hear you, John.
Still can't hear you, John. Do you want me to try? Okay. So the subcommittees met several times. They they're taking a very deep dive in the look of the subdivision code. John, are you there now? Okay. So one of the things they're looking at is changing the process of a public hearing to make it cleaner and streamline it for everyone. And it also gets you guys involved more in the early in the process. It also gets mayor and council more involved early in their process. Which I think we've noticed can be kind of difficult when they get a plan that you know, they they're holding a public hearing when a plan has all of its final plan approvals, which kind of makes it hard for them to make any comments. So attached to the agenda was the draft process and looking to add a couple of different things and also to get planning commission more information upfront. So requiring them to meet with staff, myself, Charlie, you know, engineers to for a pre-application meeting. And then the next step is they submit an application and what staff is going to try and work on is how do we get other agencies like Delta? Because you get an engineering report, but you don't hear from the Conservation District or the Fire Marshal or Delta. So try to get them to provide preliminary comments on a preliminary plan. And then you guys would hold a public hearing, make a recommendation, and then that would then go to mayor and council. And then they would then, based on action by mayor and council, they would then go get their agency approvals and then it would go back for approval by mayor and council for the final. Something else they they really wanted to do was change the name from preliminary consent to preliminary review.
Do you have me on audio now?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Sorry, I've been having to join from my phone. Yeah, so we really wanted to change prelimin the term preliminary consent to preliminary review. And that seemed to gain consensus pretty quickly. We're curious, see how the rest of you guys felt about that change. We feel that it's clear.
Do you have any comment on that?
Yeah, is there any comment on that?
I think it's much clearer.
Yeah, I think it's good.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, I don't I don't have comment. I think it's more that is more consistent with the way I see other jurisdictions doing it. Right.
Good. No, that's okay. The other thing we discussed is we discussed more of a framework for chapter one seventy or a design and guideline standards to to lay it out. Do you have that graphic, Janelle? And this is really where we kind of ended our subcommittee committee meeting with, because staff will have some work to do to kind of restructure this information and make it a little more clear to the public. I like the idea, like the way it looks, and I think it'll be very helpful for the city, the applicants and other stakeholders as well. So here's an example real quick of how it would be laid out for chapter one seventy. So you can see there's a category intent statement, a standard and a guideline, just to help to, you know, be clear in the process. And that's really where we're at with the project right now. We have a date. What's our date for the next meeting, Janelle?
July fifteenth at one P M.
July fifteen at one P M, where we intend to continue to work on all of these areas that we just discussed.
I just suggest, John, when your subcommittee gets these recommendations more mature, you need to run them by Glenn to make sure there's nothing that would be offensive based on state law or otherwise in the code that would have to be amended. Before you come back for final approval by the full committee, I want to make sure that the city solicitors had a chance to review these. And make sure we're all consistent with the applicable state local laws and ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sounds good.
John, do you need some help on your subcommittee? Are you are you being are you able to get enough volunteers?
I feel as though we are really progressing through this very efficiently. I think we have a good team going.
But you're what you're willing to if others are interested on July fifteenth at one and want to join you, you're certainly inviting them to come along, yes?
Sure, of course.
All right. Is there anything you'd like from us tonight, other than your status report? Any any feedback you want from us?
Just status report. And if anybody has comments on switching up the process, you know, the order of operations, if anybody had a comment about that, I just wanted to give the opportunity at this point in the process so we can kind of change trajectory or take input as as we need.
Any suggestions from another commissioner? John, I think you guys are doing a great job. We appreciate your leadership and your subcommittee's diligence on following this up. And for Janelle's support of it, we look forward to getting updates regularly and hopefully in the not too distant future, get your package for us so we can send it up to Mayor and City Council. But on behalf of all of us, thank you and your team.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's move on to individual reports. City Solicitor Glenn, do you have anything to add or update us on?
The only thing I thought I'd mentioned, Mr. Chair, because people have watched it pretty closely, is the the net reel on the Lewis Historical Society's property. That was scheduled to be on City Council's agenda Monday this week, and it was it was removed so that that so the Lewis Historical Society could go to the Board of Adjustment. You might know that initially they they filed an application to go to the Board of Adjustment to see if they were subject to H Park jurisdiction or not. City Council was going to consider an ordinance that would make historic artifacts not subject to H Park. Rather than doing that, City Council basically said, look, our processes are already been started at the at the Board of Adjustment. We should allow that process to see itself through and, you know, revisit it maybe after that process if if it warrants it. So that issue is back before the Board of Adjustment. I think the hearing is going to be sometime in September.
Want to comment on the MOU status?
Sure, thanks. City Council and BPW both have been working hard on trying to resolve some matters that you all heard about, I'm sure. Happy to report that there's been a lot of movement on a memorandum of understanding and a potential charter amendment that both the BPW and the city have looked at and reworked and tweaked, and we're down to a couple of wordsmithing issues right now. And Friday at ten A M, City Council meets and will possibly approve the MOU and charter amendments. The charter amendment will have to go to the legislature and they they end their session the thirty thirtieth of this month. So we are sort of at the last, you know, five yards. But I've been I'm I'm really encouraged where we are. So I think it's everything's been very positive recently.
That's great news. I'm glad to hear that. Of course, there will be a special session this fall. I don't know if it'll be limited to reapportionment, but there will be a special session this fall.
That's right.
All right. Thank you, Glenn. Joe, any H Park news that other than the net reel you want to share with us?
No, that basically is it. There was a big sigh of relief on the part of H Park when that went through City Council, so that's all.
Thank you. Janelle, anything else from your plate that we should be hearing about?
I just wanted to give everybody an update on the resilient community partnership that the city is working with the University of Delaware and Denrec, the Institute of Public Administration in Delo and Denrec. And we had some listening sessions last week, which I know a number of you were able to attend, so we appreciate that. The survey, which is the same questions that were in the listening session, is still up. If you hadn't gotten to it, but I think we got well over a hundred people filling that information out. So we will be on Tuesday, giving council an update as to where we are in the status and some some ideas for next steps. So just wanted to keep you updated that we are continuing to move forward with with the resiliency project.
And next month, you expect to have Old Town at White's Pond before us the final site review?
I'm hoping they sent me an email late today that I haven't had a chance to get back to, so we're hoping to have the final next month.
And that would be at our regularly scheduled meeting on the twenty first.
Correct.
All right. Khalil, anything from your perspective as our council liaison you wish to share?
The only thing I was like, I would I would have shared is what Glenn just spoke of, and I think he very accurately conveyed the current state of play between the BPW and and the city.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Panetta, anything else as your liaison from the Board of Public Works?
I just want to reiterate what Glenn had said. We're hoping that the MOU and charter change will approve by the city on Friday. We have a special meeting on Monday to give it our final approval. And then it'll go to Senator Lopez and Representative Schmeck and make it through this session. So hopefully this will be behind us by the end of the month and we can start working together in a more collaborative and constructive manner.
I think everybody in the city hopes that's the case. Janelle, is Anne Marie with us?
Sorry, I was muted. I know she was listening and I talked to her earlier and she did not have any updates.
All right, any other commissioner have an update on any matter that would be helpful to our understanding what's going on around town? Other than the fact we're getting crowded already. Summer is here. Bob?
I have one item of maybe you call it new business, but in re in the recent past, every every time a real estate issue came up of some sort, Councilman Osler would raise her hand and say you might be getting into the area of takings. I'm sure she got an A on that class in law school. But I think we all, the planning commission and maybe Mayor and City Council, could use some official advice about how that works in Delaware. And I think we should at least think about hiring an expert in that field or getting some education or a resource we can go to and say, you know, will this violate that? Or what's the case law there or or whatever? Because at this point, we could decide something that is, let's say, good science that goes nowhere, and we won't find out about it until the end of the process.
Glenn, are you you were one of the members of your firm sufficiently versed in takings in Delaware to give us an education on that on one of our upcoming meetings?
Yeah, I I think so, Mr. Chair, and you know, I wouldn't get into the level of detail or nuance that that would, you know, sort of Yeah, I think so, Mr. Chair, and you know, I wouldn't get into the level of detail or nuance that that would, you know, sort of glaze your eyes over, but but yes, I have a pretty good working knowledge of takings. If you recall, the the city actually adopted a beneficial use ordinance a while back. That is sort of a backstop to a takings claim. So if somebody makes a takings claim in the city. There's an administrative process they have to go through a hearing to allow the city to evaluate whether the action it took actually does amount to a taking. And they did amount to a taking, the city can then provide just compensation to that individual so that we don't end up in federal court. So so there is a backstop to the takings issue at this point, but I'd be happy to at some point talk through takings or provide a memo.
I'm going to ask Janelle to keep that in mind for one of the upcoming agendas that is not overloaded. On a regular meeting to give you advance notice, but to have. You know, 10 or 15 minutes on takings to further delve into it a little bit in the weeds. To give us some parameters on the issues in Delaware that would affect Lewis. And then we can follow up Bob or others on an individual basis, but I think it is. Pertinent perhaps even to the new executive committee to think about that since that issue has been raised by a number of our fellow citizens on the other side of the canal.
And so I just one more thing on that topic as well is that there is planning commission orientation training on July 26. Where I expect some of that information to be brought up and discussed as well. Getting into some land use law. I know I sent out an email invite, calendar invite. So. I expect some of that item like takings and land use law items to also be discussed during that training.
Well, that might be the best forum to start. What remind me what time that is?
I want to say it's 6:30. Just going to triple check.
I think that's correct.
Yeah.
Yep, 6:30. And, you know, we'll have a number of lawyers and lots of information to provide. And if you can't make it, please let me know. But I think everybody's schedules was clear for that.
And that will be recorded?
It can be if you so choose.
Yeah, I think we should record it in case someone can't make it that we could play it. Let them look at it or they even go back and do it again.
Yeah, I think if it's going to be a public meeting, we're going to record it anyhow. And now Anne Marie has her hand up.
Well, it's a way, come on.
No, we we were planning to record it because we figured that as new commissioners are appointed. And as new members of council come on, it's it'll be a worthwhile. Training that they could view. You know, after we present it. So we're definitely recording it.
Great. Tom Jensen, did I see your hand go up? His box went yellow. I thought he was trying to say something a minute ago. All right, if I if hearing nothing further, can we move on to the minutes of the May 19? Are there any corrections, additions or deletions to those minutes? Joe?
Yeah, I was on page four. From the minutes of April 21st, I was clarifying my statements there in regards to a article in the Cape Gazette. And. The the last line. Lewis does have two floodplain mitigation managers. There was a L put in there for litigation, but it's M for mitigation managers. And then following that. The statement. I said was flood insurance rates will not go up. If there is high density built in a floodplain. I talked to the building official. And this is regarding Lewis Waterfront Preserve. And the townhouses in Lewis Waterfront Preserve will not need flood insurance because they're not in a floodplain. So I don't know why anybody else's insurance is going to go up, but. There's no reason for flood insurance rates to go up if there is high density built near the floodplain. Now, that's not saying flooded rates are not going up in the future. But not because of this project.
Okay, those two corrections without objection. Are there any other additions, corrections or deletions to the minutes? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve them as amended?
I said move.
Joe seconds. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposing abstaining. The minutes are approved as amended. Any other matters before the commission meeting tonight? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is that Tom?
Yes, sir.
Well done.
Is there a second? Is that a second?
Second.
All right, John seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous again. Thank you all very much and look forward to your delving into the Fisher's Cove material that's on the website. It is voluminous, so please spend some time before the public hearing. And in the meantime, if you have questions or matters for Janelle. Please let her know so she can follow up for us and make us all smarter. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good night.